And those items have been prior to staff meeting, prior to staff, prior to a meeting are helpful and welcome. During our meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And during the hearing on a specific agenda item, any member of the public may speak about that item on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communication or during the consideration of an agenda item, you must join the Zoom webinar via the link and password provided on page two of the staff report. When I announce the item for which you wish to speak, please click the raise hand feature in Zoom. And if you're participating by phone only, press star nine on your telephone keypad. When called to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Alternatively, you may choose to speak anonymously, but it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. At this time, we've come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda. Director Paulson, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
Thank you, Chair. Is there anyone that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? I don't see any hands raised, Chair.
All right, thank you. We now move on to item one on tonight's agenda, which is the consent calendar. We have one item to be acted upon with a single motion, and that is the approval of the draft minutes from May 12, 2021, planning commission meeting. Does any commission member or member of the public wish to pull the item from the consent calendar? I don't see any hands raised. So may I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar? Commissioner Tavanna?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Suzuki, thank you for that. Any comments before I call the question? I don't see any hands raised. And again, thank you for raising your actual hand so I can see who needs to speak. Let's take the roll call vote to approve the minutes. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Abstain.
Commissioner Suzuki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burge?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes with one abstention. We're now moving on to agenda item two, which is the public hearing requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence with reduced front and side setbacks on non-conforming property zone R-18 located at 102 Alta Heights Court, APN 53229045. Architecture and site application S20-029. Property owner is Bo Development LLC, and the applicant is Eric Beckstrom. Project planner is Ryan Safdie. First, may I see a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Thank you. And are there any disclosures? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I would like to disclose that I have, that my aunt previously owned this property for many years, so I'm familiar with it, but it will not affect my ability to make an impartial decision tonight.
All right, thank you for that. Any other disclosures? I don't see any hands raised. I understand Mr. Safdie will begin the staff report tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for demolition of an existing single-family residence with non-conforming setbacks and construction of a new single-family residence with reduced front and side setbacks on a non-conforming R18 zone property located on Alta Heights Court. The proposed 1,825 square foot residence would be two stories tall, 28 and a half feet in height, including attached 454 square foot garage. Project plans in exhibit 11 of the staff report show a future accessory dwelling unit above the attached garage, which is not being reviewed as a part of this architecture and site application pursuant to state law. The subject property is non-conforming in that it is 5,250 square feet when 8,000 square feet is the minimum required for the zone, and is also non-conforming as to the required lot width. Pursuant to town code, any rule of the zone, including setback requirements, may be modified on non-conforming lots through an architecture and site application if the modifications are found to be compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant has provided justification for the setback requests in exhibit four of the staff report. As detailed in the staff report, there are examples of properties in the neighborhood that also do not comply with side and front setback requirements. Outside of the front and side setback reduction, the project would comply with all relevant zoning standards. The proposed residence would be, would not be the first two-story in the neighborhood, would not be the tallest, and is not the largest in square footage or for area ratio. Public comment was received for this application and is included in exhibit nine of the staff report. An addendum was prepared and distributed yesterday that included additional public comment provided in exhibit 13, as well as the applicant's response to parking and setback concerns included as exhibit 12. Based on the discussion in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the application with the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Safdie. Do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Safdie or staff? Commissioner Barnett?
I have two questions, if I might. The first question is, as you pointed out, section 2910, 265 of the code allows us to modify rules for non-conforming lots, including setback requirements if the modifications are found to be compatible with the neighborhood. I was hoping you could clarify whether the neighborhood means the immediate neighborhood with the larger neighborhood.
So the town does not define neighborhood. The immediate neighborhood definition comes from the residential design guidelines, which does not match up with the town code. So it's really at the planning commission's discretion which properties to include in that analysis and which ones not to include.
Thank you. And then if I may proceed with my second question?
Yes, please.
Is it correct that the opinion of the consulting arborist, Mr. Levinson, given today is that moving the proposed house to the rear by two feet would not endanger tree 74, the coast live oak tree?
That is correct. Staff reached out to the consulting arborist for the commission's request, and he did confirm that moving the entire structure back two feet would still be, would still not be further than the existing footprint of the attached garage that's there right now. And so there would not be any additional impact anticipated to that tree.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanson?
I have a question for staff. The consulting architect did review the property and gave a number of recommendations, although he said it was well-designed, but he had a number of recommendations. And it looked to me like they had addressed every one of the recommendations, whereas sometimes our applicants will say, I'm not going to do that. So I wanted to know, is it staff's opinion that they've addressed all of the consulting architects' recommendations?
Correct, that is staff's opinion, as detailed in exhibit seven of the staff report, and it responds to each of the recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, I don't see any hands raised, so we will move on to open the public hearing and give the applicant up to five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you, Chair. Whoever will be speaking on behalf of the project, please raise your hand. From the applicant team, all right, I will allow the architect to speak, and you have up to five minutes. Mr. Beckstrom?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, I can't see myself. Just a minute, sorry. There we go. Can you still hear me? I can't hear you.
Fine, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you're intermittent. Hi, good evening. So my name's Eric Beckstrom, I'm the architect, and I own the house too with my girlfriend, Catherine, who's sitting right next to me. We work together. So the Loma Alta neighborhood was established more than 130 years ago. It is an historic neighborhood, which gives it charm and character. There are a wide variety of styles and sizes of homes in this area. The current house was built 63 years ago. It is a tired, poorly-built ranch house where I work every day as my office, so I kind of know how bad it is. The challenge is, this is an extremely challenging lot for many reasons. It is substandard in size at only 5,250 square feet, which is nearly 50% below the maximum size in this zone of 10,000 square feet. And it is oddly shaped with, you know, curves in the front and at the rear lot lines. And as mentioned earlier, there's the, oh, thank you, Ryan. And I'm a history buff, so you can see, I kind of, I found, you know, maps of the streets and everything from 1891, Sanborn, and there's earlier ones. On the little circle, you can see that's where Alta Heights Court is now. So we are proposing a modest Tudor-style two-story home to blend in with the historic village setting. The proposed home meets the square footage size and height limits of Los Gatos and adds only 249 square feet to the existing house. In a sense, we're to the footprint, we're adding 250 square foot to the first floor and then adding a second floor to kind of the size of the house that's there. It will be built with high-end finishes, marv and windows, doors, stucco with recessed openings per the consulting architect's recommendations. Always find that input from all, everybody actually makes the design better. I mean, I work all over in a lot of jurisdictions, so it always makes it better. I mean, it's a team thing, I think, when we work together. Ryan's helped the project and the consulting architect, so I always take it as making seafood stew, taking in all the input and making a better project. We are attempting to build a passively heated house as well, with marv and high-end windows, stucco with recessed openings, excuse me. It will be highly efficient with solar panels, extra insulation, and a state-of-the-art heating and cooling system. And this will be an all-electric house per the new Los Gatos code. And we're also happy we're able to fit the required two-car garage and a two-car driveway and still allow adequate room around the tree, which should allow this tree to thrive. And then in terms of neighborhood communications, in August 2020, prior to submitting plans to the city, we met all the neighbors in the court, showed them accurate 3D renderings of the, of the design, and received unanimous support. And we've made ourselves available to meet at any time, email, phone, I mean, I'm working there every day in one of the bedrooms. And there's a timeline in the package which summarizes our communication with neighbors. And we feel confident this proposed house will be a nice addition to the neighborhood, and we very much appreciate your consideration and approval. And we're open to questions from, you know, the planning commission members. But maybe, I don't know if you want to go. So thank you, Ryan, for doing the little slideshow. There's a view, you can see. And we're actually, our lot is before the circle, opposite us is actually the 116 backyard, 10-foot fence, and then the circle starts. So all the rest of the lots in our cul-de-sacs are actually pie-shaped. And our lot actually used to be a road to access a lot, so it's got a kind of funky history, which I don't want to bore you with, but it's kind of a curious situation. And actually, our lot is actually the backyard of 175 Loma Alta, historically. And then they subdivided this twice in 1948, and then in 1954, or something like that, to make the cul-de-sac. So it's kind of a lot that dropped out of the sky, you know, got carved up, which is typical. Again, this is a, what's also fascinating, because I've worked on another historic project in Los Gatos, is just that this area is considered, has been mapped as much as downtown, like the Sanborn Fire map, so all the houses in this neighborhood as much as downtown. So really, Los Gatos was a kind of a funny-shaped, you know, city, if you will. And this Loma Alta is like one of the first streets along with the downtown, so. And then they had a hard, the reason why they subdivided it, I don't know if everybody realizes it, it's because Stacia is so steep behind it. So Stacia, you can't access the lots off of Stacia, so that's why they did the cul-de-sac. So that's just a brief history, that's an aside, just for historical bots. So I'll end there, and I'm open to any questions, and so thank you for your time and consideration. Can you hear me?
Chair, you're muted.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you for that. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? I don't see any hands raised, but we will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant when they come back. So at this time, we'll move to public comments. Members of the public may choose to state your name and address, or you may choose to speak anonymously, but please understand that this meeting is being recorded for the public record. Director Paulson, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the first speaker will be Rajiv or Swati?
Hey there. Good evening, Madam Chair, Director Paulson, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. I presume all of you can hear me well?
We can.
Perfect. I'm, in fact, as Director Paulson identified, speaking on behalf of Rajiv Parhar and Swati Shahar. We are residents and owners of 104 Alta Heights on the east side of the applicant's property. Just want to make my comments brief. I believe we've sent correspondence, which should be in your pockets, detailing our concerns at length, so I just want to summarize here for the commissioners. First, let me say we're generally supportive of the applicant's right to build a home that they love and that they'll live in. It's the massing bulk and placement of the house that doesn't seem to work well with the size of the lot. To detail, we have three major concerns with the design as currently proposed. One is that the applicants are asking for a reduction of the side setbacks from eight feet to, I think it's around five foot six, on the east and west elevations. And, you know, given how large the house is and the fact that it's a two-story house and the tiny size of the lot, and frankly, for privacy and safety concerns, we request that the side setbacks be maintained at eight feet. We also note that the requested five-foot-six setback is further reduced by a cantilever projection on the east side of the house, which we request be removed to honor the intent of the setback requirements. We also note that the applicants are asking for a front setback of 18 feet. We think that it would be more in keeping with the neighborhood if, in fact, the setback could be maintained at least at about 20 feet, so the car can be pulled fully into the driveway without extending into the sidewalk. It's super tight right now when you, at the current front setback. And I think finally, as we've detailed from pictures we've sent in to the planning commission, you know, we, from our west side, the views, the light, we're asking that the height of the house be reduced, so that some of the view and light from the west side of our house can be maintained. You know, our west side of the house largely looks out at the wall and the roof of the applicant's current proposed design. Of course, this is to be expected with a two-story house, but right now, it practically fills up all the windows, and so we're asking for a reduction of the height to some degree to alleviate that impact. That summarizes my comments. I thank you for your time again.
Thank you for your, for your comments. And do any commissioners have questions for the speaker? All right, I don't see any hands raised. Director Paulson, do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Yes, the next speaker will be Harvey.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, hi, my name's Harvey Grassi. Address is 106 Alta Heights Court, just on the other side of the gentleman who just spoke. Just a couple of quick comments. One, just wanted to state for the record, I don't think it's going to materially change anything, but I think Eric said originally that he received unanimous support from the neighbors. I didn't express discontent, but I also didn't express support, so I just wanted to make that clear for the record. The second comment I'll make is that I thought in the last conversation, or the last comments, points number one, two, and three, I would say that I agree with point number two and three. I submitted my comments via email. Ryan received those and said they would be put on public record, but I feel similarly that if you were to look at a minivan that's actually in the driveway right now, you would see, probably be pretty hard to back it in and actually be able to get anything out of the back. So, you know, would like to keep the sidewalk clear. On the point number one, I don't think it's my place to comment, the setbacks don't affect me at all, so I won't comment on that, but I think points two and three, I would say I agree with as well. It feels like a fairly ominous structure, given how it's placed and the size. Thank you for listening to my comments.
And we thank you for your comments. Any commissioners have questions for this applicant or for the speaker? I don't see any hands raised. Director Paulson, do we have any other individuals wishing to speak?
Give it a couple of seconds here. If you would like to speak on this matter, please use the raise hand feature. I do not see any other hands raised, Chair.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we will invite the applicant back to speak. You'll have an additional three minutes if you'd like to address the commission.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to, are you still there? I'm getting, okay, thank you. So, so thanks for the comments and questions. I think I hear the, they're kind of late responses, because it's been, you know, since last September. So the house is actually, if you go just to our Loma Alta, there's houses that are taller. I think even 175 right next to us is taller than our house. So I think it's a perception thing. I find this with other projects, that when storage holes go up, it's like somehow in our brains, we make it bigger than what it is. And then when the house is there with siding and windows, then it's like a little house. So, I mean, I'll just, and I'm a master's in urban design too, if that's worth. So I think this house is like totally fits. We worked like really hard every inch so that it worked around the tree, the setback. And ironically, 175 next to us, it's four and a half feet from Alta Heights Court. So they're almost, their whole house is almost in front of the face of our garage. So, I mean, there's kind of a scale thing, I guess, when you drive in. So I'm not, I don't, I don't think I need to defend anything, it's just that it's quite stark how strong, and 116 as well is 11 feet from the street, so we're 18. And then in terms of parking, as an architect, I mean, I've designed commercial, the standard parking size across America is nine by 18. So every parking lot that you go to, and I've done, you know, in Mountain View, I did multifamily with, with, you know, concrete parking lots, everything is nine by 18. Every car in the world goes, and America's nine by 18. So I think, I, right now, I've got my minivan, I have a soccer mom van, and I have another car, and then I have the Vespa, and they're all parked in front of the garage, fine. So I think the reason not to push it back is actually the oak tree, number one. And two is, on the back, 161 Loma Alta actually built their garage on our property line, so in the backyard, and they have a shed on our, built on top of our property in the back, which we've been trying to deal with that in a really nice, friendly way. So in a way, we're kind of squeezed from, we actually have, you know, if you go in the backyard, you're going to see a garage, it's like basically, their roof hangs over our property line, which is, we're going to deal with it a nice way, you know, whatever we've been talking to them. So I think that the, it would be a major, like the side setback would be going back to the drawing board, like all the way. It would be a different house. It'd basically be a garage with a front door. And right now, we're checking, we're keeping the exact same footprint of the house that's there. So it's been there for 63 years without, and then, anyway, I'll stop there. I think we've probably gone enough. Does anybody have any questions for me? It's hard with I can't see my video of me talking, but anyway, if anybody has any questions, I'm more than open. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have questions for you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I, I think you already answered the question, and I wanted to thank you, you had very detailed information about the history of the house and what the neighborhood was like and all that stuff. So I just want to go back to, you know, the asks from your neighbors.
Yes.
Obviously, your goal is to have a bigger, nicer, more modern house that can take you forward. If you were to acquiesce to their demands, would it be possible to get the things that you're looking for in this house?
No, I mean, basically, I've designed, this house is like, sorry, Swiss watch, and I'm just saying, it's like really challenging on that lot. There wouldn't be a den on the downstairs. We basically wind up, it would be, literally, it'd probably be another, you know, six months or something to redesign to get it. I don't think we could, we wouldn't be the same house. But I think I'm, it's not, and that, so I'm not sure which, unless you design, I mean, it's hard to speak about it, you know, but if you design, it's hard to make it work on this lot. So I think we've done a house that's, so I guess the answer's, I don't want to be saying no, but it's extremely challenging. And I would do it if I could. I changed, I revise plans for clients all the time. That's how I do my work, is, you know, by being really flexible, but this one's really challenging.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the question.
Any other questions for the applicant? I do have one. We've heard, we've heard about the setbacks. There's a request to reduce the height of the home. Have you thought about that in terms of your design, which, by the way, with, you know, respect for our consulting architect, the design is an excellent one, and so you do have a certain design integrity, but is there any thought to reducing the roof height?
So, you know, one could, I guess what's, again, I'll go to 175 Loma Alta next to us, which has a facade three times longer than ours, and I think their roof is taller than ours. Their ridge may be higher by six inches, but their walls are taller. I mean, they have a wall that, with a, with two-story full wall that, so it's like three times more a wall, so there's this kind of weird, I guess, just as a citizen, I'm kind of going, wait, if you walk by that house, is that really bothering everybody too, the existing house? Is that so detrimental? Then we've got a house, so, but I don't know if lowering our house six inches is going to change the fact that there's a house there. We look right at 104, which is a white Stark House with no definition right now, you know, so I don't know how to, I guess we could lower it six inches?
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions from commissioners? I don't see any hands raised. So at this time, we will, we will close the public hearing, and commissioners have a chance to discuss the matter, ask additional questions of staff, and entertain a motion. Vice Chair Burge?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for staff. The first one, while probably not necessarily relevant to how we will make a motion, I was actually very shocked when I was, you know, kind of looking around there, and again, looking at the drawings, to see that there's a property that basically has a garage. And I'm kind of glad I'm getting to see, by the way, the site plan that was provided, because I can see the curve of the property line, that there's a garage built right on top of it, and another building literally built in their backyard. And I know that that doesn't necessarily weigh into how we would create a motion. However, there is a perception of how much property is involved when you see those additional structures on a lot. So, one, you know, is that something that they can obviously work through the town to have those buildings removed from their property so they actually have full access to their own property? And has the, you know, Ryan or Mr. Paulson, have you guys been speaking with them to assist them in that?
Thank you for the question. So those, those existing buildings, that's a civil issue. So that is something, as the applicant mentioned, that they are going to be working with the neighborhood property owners on. So that is not something the town would get involved in. We have non-conforming buildings over property lines all over town.
Oh, I know we do.
So, you know, ultimately, and unfortunately, Mr. Schultz could join us this evening, but I would assume he would have the same exact answer, that this is a civil issue that has to be worked out amongst the neighbors.
Okay. So then if I can ask my, my second question. I was trying, trying to find, there was an elevation that showed the properties, and it looked as though you could see between the neighbors a bit of an elevation change between house to house. It doesn't look like it's significant, but Mr. Safdie, could you give me an idea of between 102 and their two adjacent neighbors, what the difference in elevation is?
Certainly. If you don't mind giving me one second to verify.
Don't mind at all. I have been flipping through here, trying to find that piece of paper and not having any luck.
I think that might be sheet A 3.2 that you're speaking of in the plans.
Yeah.
And 3.1 has some as well.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was 3.1. So do you guys have, I'm not looking for an exact, but what that elevation change is between them? So do you guys have, I'm not looking for an exact, but what that elevation change is between them?
Excuse Mr. Safdie a second. I don't know that we have that information, but Mr. Safdie's looking as we speak.
Yeah, so pursuant to the plans, you know, the proposed house would be 28 feet, six and a half inches. 175 Loma Alta, you know, on the corner to the left here in the street, would be 28 foot, it looks like seven inches, but unfortunately, there's a graphic error kind of blocking off what that inch dimension would be. And then, one, sorry. 175 Loma Alta is actually 29 foot, 11 inches, and the other one I just referred to would be 104 Alta Heights, 28 foot something. But again, that dimension is cut off on the sheet I'm looking at, 28, 7, and 1/8.
And that is from ground to the tallest point, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's how we measure actual heights.
So that doesn't even take into consideration that 102 Alta actually sits lower than both of those by a little bit, correct?
Correct. And again, I'm trying to go back and forth through the plans, but I do believe the height measurements kind of call where they are being measured from. So you can see that difference in the grade if you look at where the bottom of those measurements are taken from.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Hanson.
So, so my question for staff is, as you noted in the staff report, you know, this application meets all of the town code requirements and the residential design guideline requirements, with the exception of the setbacks. And there was substantial evidence presented by the applicant and mentioned in the staff report of examples in the neighborhood where both the front and the side backs, site setbacks, there are multiple examples where they weren't conforming, and then also the lot size as well. And so my question is, you know, given the examples that the applicant presented is, do you concur with the information they presented in addition to the stuff that you presented in the staff report?
Yes, and we did specify in the staff report that, based on all that information, staff does recommend approval of this application.
Okay. And so then, if I could make a comment, Chair?
Yes.
So I, after looking through all this, I, I feel that the applicant has done an excellent job of coming up with a design that works. And this is a really common thing when you go, you know, have, if you're on the planning commission for a while, where we see that in a neighborhood of both single and two-story homes, when you go from the one to two-story home, it's difficult. Because there's no way it doesn't have some impact on somebody that's close to them. And especially since this is in a cul-de-sac where they're all kind of like jammed in there, and there's people behind them and next to them. So I feel like the applicant has done a great job of coming up with a design that works, that's modest. I mean, they're looking at going up only about 700 square feet in total. It is close to the maximum far for the property, but it's not exceeding it. And so I feel like they've done a great job, and it's certainly reasonable, given that there's already nonconforming lots in the neighborhood and multiple other examples of setbacks that, that haven't concurred. I don't know that there's any way that they can get the increase in size that they want without, without reducing the house if they were to meet everyone's demands. So I think it's a good project.
Yeah, thank you for that. Any other comments from commissioners? I would like to add also, before Commissioner Barnett, one of the reasons the information about the history of the neighborhood is, is relevant to our conversation is because this is, yes, this is one of the oldest areas in the town of Las Gatos. And as a history buff myself, I can appreciate someone doing research into the sandborne maps and bringing that information to our attention. When these lots get cut up, they get cut up in funny ways sometimes, and this is what we have tonight. And I think that respecting that this is a small lot, a tiny lot, and the home is reasonably sized and, and carefully designed, I think it does, it does lend itself to the neighborhood. It looks and feels historic in a certain way, and that's nice. And I'm honestly a little bit surprised at some of the, some of the eclectic architecture on this particular, on this particular court, but I don't think that the addition of this house detracts from that eclecticism. And having said that, Commissioner Barnett, did you still wish to comment?
Yes, if I may. I think it's a beautifully designed house. I think it does fit, you know, within the context of the neighborhood. I am concerned about the bulk of the residents, and I know it's very challenging, given the small size of the lot. But if I had my way, I would like to see the side setbacks brought in a little bit further, and the house moved backwards as allowed by the town arborist, and the height of the roof perhaps dropped a foot. So I see this as minor tweaks. They may present some challenges, but it seems like they wouldn't be overwhelming challenges. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnett.
Did you say my name? Sorry. Okay. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, taking a look at the property, you know, looking at the odd shape of it, and I really do appreciate the history. I'm also a big history buff. And because I honestly was a little confused when I was out there taking a look at it and, and why it was shaped the way it was. It really has a lot less usable ground that, that could be used to build a house. I think that this is a great home for that lot. It's not excessively large, you know, looking at the size of the rooms and everything. They're not excessive in a way that makes me, you know, feel like perhaps there's a lot of variations that they could have presented. And I do think that the style of the house lends itself a bit more to the historic neighborhood, you know, to the history of that neighborhood than perhaps a couple others even do. So I feel that, you know, based on the lot's size and configuration that they're dealing with, this is, this is something that I would definitely support.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, Commissioner Tavanna.
Yeah, I just want to say, I want to express my support for this project as well. I echo a lot of the sentiments my fellow commissioners have said tonight. These nonconforming lots, I'm very familiar with this area, can be very challenging to develop on. So I appreciate the applicant's well-designed home, his willingness to address all the, you know, comments from the town consulting architect. And the side setbacks are challenging, but given the neighborhood and going around and seeing all the side setbacks of the neighbors and the surrounding area, I have no issue approving this project tonight.
Right, thank you for that. And I just want to make a comment before Commissioner Hanson regarding the setbacks. As I look at the site map, I'll note that the setback to the west is, is against the garage, and the only structure that it's, it's coming close to is the garage of the property of 175, I believe, which looks to be practically on a lot line. So, and then the balance of the house, there's a sizable setback between it and any other structure on the west side. And on the east side, it is tight, but it is also the existing setbacks. I don't have, I don't have an issue with the setbacks being at the five foot six. And I would only note regarding moving the, siding the house farther back on the lot, we would still need to acknowledge that we are approving a nonconforming setback, because it would still not be the 25 foot required, I believe. So I, I personally would leave that question to the applicant to decide if they feel that gaining another, another foot or two makes it more comfortable to park a car, and they still don't impede too much into their backyard space, then, you know, that, that's a, that's a call that I think that they could make. Thank you for that. Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to address Commissioner Barnett's comments. I think we asked the applicant during the public hearing that if they were to address the, you know, concerns of the neighbors, that they would, I think he said, basically, they would be looking at a redesign. So, I mean, I think they've really put all this stuff in a really tight package. And, you know, I think he talked about it as kind of like a puzzle, having to put all that stuff together. I mean, I, I think it would be a big ask, given how compact this lot is and the setbacks, how, for them to be able to get the living space that they need and the design that they need by, and still ask them to give up more. So I'd be in favor of approving it as is.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments, or is somebody able to attempt a motion? Commissioner Hanson.
So I will attempt a motion. I move to approve Architecture and Site Application S-20-029 for 102 Alta Heights Court, requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence for the reduced front and side setbacks on a nonconforming property zoned R18, APN 532-29-045. And I can make the findings required for CEQA, that there's no impact with CEQA. I can make the required findings for the demolition of a single-family residence. And I can find the, make the required compliance with the zoning regulations. And I can make the findings for reduced setbacks on a nonconforming lot. And finally, I can make the, the required compliance with the residential design guidelines and the required considerations in the review of the Architecture and Site Application. And of course, this will go along with the, the conditions of approval that are in Exhibit 3, Staff.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burge.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll call the vote. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Suzuki?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burge?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the motion passes 6-1. We now move on to other business.
Chair.
Sorry?
Sorry, one second. I need to do appeal rights.
Oh, yes, thank you. Other appeal rights.
Yes. So anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available online. The form must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
All right, thank you for that. So now we will move on to other business, and we will start with the report from the Director of Community Development, Dr. Paulson.
Thank you. So at your next hearing, you're going to be participating in part of the CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act process for an environmental impact report, EIR. So I just want to give kind of a brief overview of that process. And then ultimately, at the following meeting, the town attorney and I will put some additional information together for planning commissioners, because obviously, this is a process that most of the projects that come to planning commission, they're exempt for the most part. And CEQA really is meant to disclose potential environmental impacts from discretionary projects that are proposed. And there's a number of steps in that process, and there are different paths from the, you know, categorically exempt, which most of your projects, as I mentioned, are, to mitigated negative declarations to environmental impact reports. And so those documents get prepared pursuant to state law, and there are specific steps. So I'm just going to walk through quickly the EIR steps generally. You know, we receive a project, we take a look at it, make sure there aren't any categorical or statutory exemptions available. And if that's the case, then we will have our environmental consultants prepare one of two documents, either a mitigated negative declaration or an environmental impact report. The mitigated negative declaration has a little bit less process from a review timeframe. The EIR is, has a longer timeframe. And so what happens is, most folks now actually are choosing to do environmental impact reports, even though mitigated negative declarations are probably actually sufficient. And the reason for that is that it is really easy to file a lawsuit on the mitigated negative declaration, and it's a very low threshold to get that overturned and require an EIR anyway. But generally, for an EIR, we determine, or make, or the applicant makes that determination that they want to do an EIR, even if they don't have to, we prepare a notice of preparation, and that gets sent out and posted. And then we have our consultants prepare a draft EIR, which will, which is what you will see next week. That draft EIR, when it is completed, there's what's called a notice of completion. And so that is a notice that gets filed with the state and the county. It is also posted on town website and distributed to the public. And then at that point, they're allowed 45 days to provide any written comments they would like to, on that environmental impact report. What the planning commission will be doing next week is the other step in that 45 days is, within that 45 days for an EIR, we have to have a hearing to allow people to provide verbal comments. And so that's what we'll be doing, is just simply accepting verbal comments at the next meeting. Once the 45 days is closed, all of those comments that are received, whether verbal or in writing, are packaged up and provided to our consultant. And then they will respond to all of those comments with either changes to the draft EIR or explanations as to why they're not necessary. And that becomes what's called the final environmental impact report. Once we have that, that's when the whole projects, including the environmental document, will come to the planning commission, who will, in this instance, because it's a planned development, will make a modification on both the EIR and the project to the town council, who is the final deciding body. So that's kind of the process in a nutshell. And so, like I said, we'll provide additional information next week and maybe do kind of a CEQA 101 training. It's been a while, I think, since most of the commissioners have seen an EIR, and we'll be seeing another one hopefully this fall with the general plan as well. And so ultimately, just want to pass on that information, and then we'll provide some additional information and training at the next hearing. Does anyone have any questions right now?
Vice Chair Burge.
Yeah, just, just to clarify. So the meeting, the next meeting with being the draft EIR, we as, as planning commissioners will not be making any comments, whether it be written or verbal. We're just taking in the information.
That's correct. So we will be, again, providing an opportunity for anyone in the public to provide comments on that draft EIR as currently proposed. You will see the draft EIR and final EIR as one package moving forward when the project comes before the planning commission.
All right, thank you for that question. Any other questions that's coming before us? Yes, go ahead.
Just another one, maybe a little bit more of my own curiosity. How long is the process? You, you get it in, and I guess it's decided whether they're going to do a mitigated negative or an EIR to when we're seeing the final. How long does that process usually take?
Depends on the projects, but it is generally quite lengthy. We actually have to get the project to virtually technically complete, because we don't want to be preparing an EIR when we first get a project and make changes, then you have to keep modifying the environmental impact report. And you don't want to release it until you have a set project description of what is being proposed, so that that analysis can be completed. And so I don't remember when this one submitted, but I would say we're probably over a year to this point right now. And so you probably won't see that project until sometime in the fall, and then it has to go to council. So, you know, when there's an EIR, it's generally a year minimum is, is generally for, and that's going to be a pretty straightforward project and environmental impact report. So it is, it is a lengthy process, and it, you know, I want to say the last one maybe was Green Ridge Terrace, the hillside plan development that did an environmental impact report. And the challenge we run into is because these all could potentially be done as mitigated negative declarations, putting it into the EIR process, there's, there is a requirement to have alternatives. So you typically have the project, the no project alternative, and then something that reduces the level of significance of the impacts to a lower level. The problem with 99.9% of our EIRs that we see is none of them have significant impacts. And so, as you probably recall from the opera- And so, um, as you probably recall from the Alberto Way project, there was a reduced size alternative, even though there was technically no significant impacts with project. Um, and so that gets to be challenging to decipher. But, um, ultimately it's up to the planning commission and council to choose whether it's the project, the reduced alternative or somewhere in between.
And that whole added length of time right there is just very much, um, I guess, the result of it being easier for there to be lawsuits on a mitigated declaration. I don't know why I cannot say those three words together tonight, but I can't. It's just fully from that.
Yeah, so the mitigating that negative declaration, the bar to overturn that is very low. And so that's why a lot of folks choose to do it because what happens is you go through the whole process. You end up in court, a judge says, okay, now you got to go back to an EIR and now you got to go through that whole process, go back through all the approval processes as well. So, um, it's one of those, you either decide to, to go through that process upfront or take the risk of having to go through that process down the road.
Thank you. I had wondered why we were seeing EIRs, I felt like, a little bit more often and on projects I didn't think they really made sense. So, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, I have one, one last thing to mention. Tonight is Ms. Zarnowitz's last planning commission meeting. She is retiring Friday. We're very excited for her, but we're, we're very sad to see her go. She's done a great job, obviously before COVID, she worked a lot with the planning commission, did excellent work with our historic preservation committee over the years, and that's one of her passions as well. Um, and so we're really sad to see her go, but really excited that, you know, she's not going to be like me and be found in her chair at her office.
Well, we are going to miss you, Sally.
We're saddened at that news. It's been a pleasure working with, uh, with you, Sally, on, on many fronts, so.
Yes, it has.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I mean, um, you know, I've been working with commissions for over 35 years now and I was really lucky to have the ability to work with you guys and with, uh, an amazing planning team of capable planners over these last five years of my service. And I, you know, I just wish you all the best and, um, you know, as you continue to make these reasoned determinations, um, you know, taking into account the particulars of each specific case in order to, um, you know, allow for the stewardship and the improvement of the land, which really is to the benefit of the entire community. So, you know, thank you too for your service.
Well, thank you for those kind words. We will miss you dearly, but.
But we hope you have a great retirement.
Yes, best of luck wherever your journeys take you. And hopefully we'll cross paths in Las Gatos again. All right, thank you for that. Sadly, we'll move on to, uh, subcommittee reports in addition to service on the planning commission. Members of the commission serve on several town committees. Are there any reports tonight? Commissioner Hanson.
The general plan committee versus the, uh, general plan update vice committee actually had a meeting and, um, the purpose of it was to do something very similar to what we did at planning commission, which was to review the enabling documents for the general plan committee as well as the application for the general plan committee, to make them more inclusive and encourage more applicants. And, um, it was a very interesting meeting in that I thought we would be done in 30 minutes, but it took two hours because everyone had tons and tons of comments on how to make it better and everything. And it, it was a really, really, really great discussion. And, um, you know, it, it just reminded me of what a wonderful, um, general plan committee we have. So, um, so yes, and then we did finish.
Got it done. Yeah, thank you for that report. And Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, the CDAC met today at the request of the council who asked us to review the and discuss the resolution that established the committee and also a procedural policy that's related to it. And there were quite a number of recommended changes, uh, that were identified and it was submitted to the policy committee. And as I understand, ultimately we'll, we'll go to the town council.
Yeah, thank you for that. So it seems they're marching through each of the committees, boards and, and commissions. So that's good. All right. Are there any other comments or thoughts before we adjourn the meeting? Well, thank you again for your time. Appreciate all the work that you do. This meeting is adjourned.